Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our November twenty seventh, two thousand and seventeen city council work session. The time now is six oh five. The agenda item is to discuss our two thousand and eighteen, May two thousand and eighteen bond election. Mister City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Put this on here tonight, kind of at the request of a few council members that wanted to discuss how we move forward with the bond election from here, so. Um, I can answer any questions. I've got a lot of information, just wherever you guys want to go with this discussion, just to kind of give me some direction. I know I talked to Councilmember Grow last week and he talked about perhaps doing a different rendering of the actual building itself, so if you just want to talk about the building or buildings tonight, or whatever y'all want to talk about to kind of get us going on.
Okay, thank you, Mister City Manager, Mr. Lane. Uh, Doctor Strong.
Miss Lane, uh, it is the same packet we've been discussing for many years, or last year or work. That's mean, uh, police station, fire department number three, station number three, right?
Yes, sir.
That's the same thing, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Strong. Uh, Councilmember Watkins, you have your light on as well? No? Okay. Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Yes, uh, I don't know where to go, but how did, refresh my memory a little bit, how, you know, because I was new coming on the council. Uh, and I've got all the stuff here and we paid for all these studies, uh, and it always included a municipal complex consisting of city hall and police station and fire station. How exactly did the city hall, which I feel like that's going to be the catalyst for our development up there, how did the city hall get dropped?
Well, it didn't get dropped. Basically, if you'll recall, we had, um, we had a meeting where Trent came to talk to you in a work session and, and one of the things that in, in my numerous discussions with Trent about the forty-three acre development, um, we talked about how we could get these buildings built without issuing debt for, without a bond. And of course, um, I think he's, you all know Trent, he's been around a long time and his feelings were that it's a lot easier to get a law enforcement center approved in a bond package than a city hall. And he feels confident, Hap feels very confident also that we could do what's called a P three agreement, which is basically a public-private partnership to build a city hall where the developer would build it and then we would enter into a long-term lease with the developer for the building. So, um, the fire station, it's part of the bond, but of course, it's, um, we, it's, it's almost done. We're almost complete with the design phase of that. Um, but the, when I sat down with Jennifer and I talked to Jennifer about, and Mark McClany about how much debt capacity we, we had that we wouldn't have to raise the tax rate on the INS side, um, the figure that he came up with was twenty-one million dollars approximately and, and that's approximately, it's a little more than it's going to cost to build Fire Station Three and the Law Enforcement Center, so with all those ideas coming together, that's kind of how, we didn't, we didn't do away with the city hall, we just thought and still believe that we can do that in another way and still keep it. If the bond passes, we, we would not have to raise the tax rate. So that's where the city hall, um, and again, I can't remember exactly what the date was that Trent came and talked to you guys, but I think you were on the council, Mister Brown, then or maybe-
He might have came to the EDC.
Might have been right before, yeah. No, it was here. And he, he, uh, I can't remember the date, but he talked about the P three and how that worked and that he, you know, what his feelings were on it. So that's how that all came about.
Okay. So where we would be, I mean, I'm, I feel like we've got to have a city hall. That's what people see. That's the gateway to Halton City. Uh, we don't even, we don't have jail services anymore at the police station. Police station, they've got to have a police station, yes, I've heard it, but city hall is, I feel like the synergy of what we're trying to do up there. And I just, I don't want to gamble on this P three, and that's what we're somewhat doing, correct?
Well, you, basically what would happen is, and you know, the other, the other thing you think about in this thing, if I, and you, we have, we have the choice of replacing three aged buildings that need replacing. I don't, and, and I know Councilmember Fowler has kind of an issue with the city hall. But we, we've got three buildings that are old. Um, and, and of course, the law enforcement center and Fire Station Three being a priority, that's because it's a safety concern. Both of those buildings are safety concerns, not only to the employees, but to the citizens. It's, you know, Fire Station Three is not in an ideal spot. We can't get the ladder truck in there. It's got a lot of issues. So, um, you know, if, if the P three didn't work out with the developer, which the developers that we've talked to say, you know, yeah, we can make this work, then, then, you know, that's the other thing, the council next year can say, okay, well, the P three didn't work out, now we can do a bond election for city hall. So it's, um, you know, kind of learning a little bit from the bond election in two thousand and ten, we had a lot of things on there. We had a lot of things for the citizens to choose from and, you know, when you have that many, there's going to be ones that don't make it. So, um, you know, worst-case scenario, it may delay city hall, us going out on a bond, city hall a year or whatever. So it wasn't that city hall was going to be gone forever. It was kind of trying to prioritize the buildings by need and safety and that type of thing and really believing that, you know, the P three thing could work. And I, and I trust Trent. And that's one of the reasons I brought him in front of council, to talk to council about it and answer any questions was because I trust him, his opinion on that.
Why would the P three not work for a combined, like, you know, I've got five other cities here that have built combination law enforcement, a municipal complex, housing, police and city hall. That's kind of the new trend to share lobby, share common areas to cut down on cost. Why would the police, why would a municipal complex, housing, both of those not, would that still work for, under a P three?
Um, yes, I think when I, when I initially talked to Trent about it, and of course, you know, the reason that we, we came up with the two separate building design was because of, um, you know, when I first took this position, it was, we were, what I was being told from the council at the time was, we want, they wanted to create this plaza feel and have these buildings that kind of that, that added to that, through the plaza. And when I met with Hewitt Zollers initially, and I know you weren't here, Mister Brown, but I try, I kind of ran down the laundry list of what the council wanted, um, from these buildings, what they wanted these buildings to accomplish. And of course, you know, we've talked from the very beginning, putting on that piece of property, we've heard from everybody that'll, that'll be an economic development tool, also having these buildings there to, to, to generate, um, traffic. But that's where the two-building concept came up from, you know, it's, um, I know that there are places that put police departments with their other municipal facilities, but um, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult thing to do. Ours is a little better situation because we don't have a jail and dispatch center, but it's difficult to combine those. And from the very beginning, I think it was February when we first rolled out the concept to the council and the mayor, um, with the exception of Mister Fowler, who had some issues with the building of city hall, everybody else was like, okay, yeah, this is, we like this design, let's move forward. So that's where I got my marching orders. I don't make this stuff up. I, I work at the direction of the elected officials, but, so that's where, you know, um, we never did, I never did have anybody say, okay, let's change this rendering to make it a two-story building. A lot of that was because, and you remember from the drawings and all, it kind of does create that plaza feel. Even when Hap reversed city hall to put it, city hall in Halton City, he still wanted to keep that plaza, but it was facing kind of west instead of east.
Okay. Well, there, and there again, um, I, I lean more towards the, the single building, the municipal complex, because especially what we're seeing up there, to me, every square feet is ad valorem taxes and sales tax. And when we start taking up square footage with two separate buildings, uh, you know, then we're taken away from our ability to collect ad valorem taxes and sales tax. So, yes, I wasn't here, but I'm really, and, and studying and looking and, and in fact, Hewitt Zoller's studies are, uh, you know, where they went in and done these multi-use complexes, that's, I just feel like-
Yes, sir, now?
More efficient.
Right. And that was one of the other things that, that we, I mean, Rex and I have discussed that with everybody that we've talked to this forty-three acre tract about, is saying, okay, um, Hewitt Zollers was the first one. Trent, we've talked to him multiple times about it, Hap about it, saying, okay, is that a concern to you as a developer that these buildings are going to take up too much space? And every one of them, without exception, has said, no, you've got, you have something that nobody else has. You have forty-plus acres, so it's, we don't have to cram stuff in there. It works. And if you look on that conceptual design that we rolled out back in February, you can see on there, those, nothing on there is crammed in. And again, a lot of the reason that those buildings were designed that way is because I described to them kind of what my marching orders from the council were, that plaza, and I, I said back then, I really think they hit a home run based on what I told them, you know, that what we were trying to accomplish out there. But if you look at any of those concepts, I don't think any of them look like there's anything crammed in out there. So that was, again, we, we, I mean, we, we made sure we talked to every one of them about it and said, is this a concern for you, that these are two buildings and not one? So.
Okay, one other question, and it's been brought up, that we have a fire truck that we can't get in the station up there. And who, who says that it has to be, it needs to be positioned north of Loop Eight Twenty?
Well, it needs to be able to serve the north side, and that's because of the types of buildings that we're putting up there. For example, Mister Barnes Development, um, you know, he's going to have a five-story multifamily. Um, so we, it's my understanding, I was the police chief then, it's my understanding, that's one of the reasons that we bought the ladder truck was to service that development specifically, but as construction goes up and up and up, that's what that ladder truck-
So the state or the federal government, no one's coming in and saying, you have to position that apparatus north of Loop Eight Twenty?
Not that I know of. Not, not since I've been-
That was brought up though, not that we have a fire truck that, that says it, the state says it needs to be north of Loop Eight Twenty. And what I'm getting at-
The state? No, I don't think, I don't think anybody's, I don't think the state has told you.
That's incorrect, then. The, the apparatus does not need to be positioned north of Eight Twenty.
It needs to be positioned to, you know, obviously they've, they've got three fire stations. So we've, we've had Fire Station Central, Fire Station Two and Fire Station Three. Fire Station Three is primarily responsible for the north side of the city. So that's where that apparatus needs to be placed.
North of the loop?
No, sir. Where, where it serves, basically, the fire department divides up the city into three districts.
Okay, and that's what I was getting at, is we're not, if we do the fire station where we're talking about doing it on EDC land, it's south of the loop, but that will be okay?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's still served. And, and it's right next to, and again, you know, Mister Carmody's hotel is going to be there. So it was the planned development, um, for the north side dictated that that's where the ladder truck would be stationed.
And, and the fact that it needed to be north, they needed a truck of that nature to be north of the railroad tracks, so they wouldn't get caught. They had to be, because of runtimes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions? Uh, Council, uh, Councilmember None, did I see your light on a few moments ago?
Yes, it was on. I just wanted to, um, I, I remember, my recollection is that during one of the work sessions that it specifically came up, and I think, um, Councilmember Fowler, um, was pretty adamant about it being a municipal complex. And it was asked around and I agreed that I'd like to look into that further. And I believe Scott Garrett did too. He was sitting on my left. So, I guess I was still thinking at the time that we were looking at different options. Um, and I really am in favor more of a municipal complex, because I see that more and more. I've done a lot of research on the internet, and that just seems to be the most financially, um, um, what do I want to say? Efficient way to, um, you know, to build, to go up and conserve some of that land.
Thank you, Councilmember None. Uh, let's see, Councilmember Grow, then Councilmember Thompson.
Um, just for anybody interested, it was July tenth is when Trent was here, and so that's probably when the P three arrangement, so if you guys want to go and watch the video, you'll see it. It's in the work session portion.
Thank you, sir. That was July tenth. Uh, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say I appreciate the effort that has been put forth by our staff, Keith Lane and Rex Phelps, to get the information that they were directed to get. And I think that, um, with the experts and the people that they contacted and had the information drawn from, I think is right on target. Um, one of the concerns that I have, and I keep hearing, and, um, I think it's food for thought, is the safety of our citizens, our city employees. When you combine services, even though they would be separate, there's issues that can happen. And with the way the world is changing, I think that the police department would be better served to be separate. I think that, um, initially, um, it's a good idea to do the combined, but I think there's a lot of wasted space. There's safety issues that could occur that would involve the city hall side, and you don't want to do that. And the other thing would be the cost, if you have, uh, a two-story, three-story, whatever, is your, um, cooling bills. It may cost us less to build it, but what is, what is it going to cost us to maintain and to cool for staffing and for citizens as they come in? So I really think that our renderings that we have, we spent money, we've had a lot of time put into it. And I think early on, once that was presented, I think these questions should have been brought up at that point. It shouldn't have been delayed. And now, kind of going in reverse, we're thinking of things that we should have done earlier on. So, uh, my contention is to go with the plans that we have. I think that that would be more advantageous. And then if we needed to grow and needed to do something, then you've got two separate buildings, whereas you're controlling your growth when you combine them and have a two-story building. I don't think that it would be utilized as well. So to me, it's anchoring in the whole area, and if the senior center and the YMCA goes across, we're going to have a lot of activity between the library, the city hall and the police department. So I think that will be advantageous for the retail. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Council, Council, uh, Doctor Tron, Councilmember Trong, and then Councilmember Fowler. Yes, sir.
You know, when, uh, Council Fowler, Frau, Miss None, Billy, we combined a building, we saved a tax money or something like that, I think that's a good idea for ten years ago. But look at for the last ten or five years, especially right now. Many crazy criminals out there looking for police to kill. And if the police officer is not feel like secure, he worry himself more than worry about safety of citizen, then he cannot put a hundred percent of effort to serve our citizen. Like many of you know, Council Grow, ex-police officer, city manager, ex-police officer, chief, assistant city manager, and I am currently still a police officer for thirty-one years. Doesn't mean I'm police officer. That's mean I support, the police has a separate building so they can enjoy anything by themselves. What I'm speaking is for the safety of officer. Look at in Dallas, they look at the building to shoot the police officer. And the ambush, kill how many police officer. I repeat one more time, that our city need to have the separate police station with fence, so we can protect our vehicle, we can protect our public safety officer, and we have the officer in our city put a hundred percent effort to serve our citizen. I hope all council thinking about, uh, the safety of officer, because without safety, we can't do anything. And I hope, would you please, you know, if we have a bond issue, all of us need to support a separate building for police officer, and thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I mean, I'm hearing a whole lot of hypotheticals out here and, uh, I guess just to clear this, clear the air, I, I mean, I think we're, we're, have, have we acquired the property for this facilities yet? Don't we, if we're gonna build something, shouldn't we have the land that we actually have acquired first?
You're referring to the EDC on property that's already owned?
Right.
By the, by the city?
It's not owned by the city, it's owned by the EDC.
Okay.
So, I mean-
Of course, we've had a joint meeting with them and they gave no opposition too.
When was that joint meeting?
Uh, this was discussed when we had our joint meeting more than once. I mean, I'd have to go back and look at the dates, but, uh, we've discussed this more than once. They're, they're, they're well aware of the, this council's intent, you know, to construct new facilities.
Okay, well, that's, uh, you weren't there at this last meeting and it didn't appear that everyone was that aware of it, I don't know.
Oh, they weren't aware?
No, sir. Not that I, not that I was, uh, that's not the impression that I received, but needless to say, I mean, we're, we're, have, we had any workshops on this?
Workshops on this?
Mm-hmm.
We've had multiple, actually, since February of this year.
That were specific to the bond election?
Yeah, we have. Again, I'll have to go back and look at the dates, but, uh, we've had them.
I, I guess I wasn't there then, because I don't remember.
You were there.
Do you have a specific?
Absolutely. We had one in February.
It was specific?
Yes, the one that, that's-
Last year?
Yes, sir. No, this year, seventeen. That was the one that Mister Garrett walked out of. Um, I think that might jog your memory. You got mad and walked out of it, but that's the meeting where I rolled out the concepts to you guys and said-
But have we had any since then?
Yes, I brought Trent in here, we brought Happy in here, we've all talked about this development and, including the, the two built, the plan for the two buildings to be in there.
Well, I mean, and I guess, well, then I'll apologize. I guess I'm much more of a stickler for detail then, and especially when we're talking about long-term debt for, you know, not only, you know, our citizens, but our, you know, the things that, that, uh, that we, uh, are looking at, you know, thirty-year bond issues, I, I guess, I just feel like we probably should have spent a little more time. I'm in, I'm in full support of, of moving forward with this. Um, I, I'm going to tell you, I'm in full support of building one building, this municipal complex is, we were told that this was to create synergy, that we needed city hall for developers to come in and for all this, so I have no problem with that. I have no problem. I, I don't understand where we, you know, um, we have five, five or six surrounding city halls and, and communities that are right here in our sister city next door builds a three-story facility that houses even their public works. So I don't, you know, I don't know that they're that far off base. Uh, you know, I've been confronted the last two years with us not being able to have enough money to fix air conditioning units in buildings that we have. We've had to replace roofs that are less than ten years old, that we've had to pull money out of the general fund for, because once again, we have multiple facilities. So I think it's our duty to make sure that we look at those things and make sure that the smart and, and the wise thing to do is build a facility that makes sense, that, you know, I have no problem with a facility. I just think that we need to probably look a little more in-depth and make sure that we're doing something that makes sense for the taxpayer. Uh, you know, and that's, that's my deal. I, I mean, I really think there needs to be, when you're- when you're looking at a thirty million dollar issue, I think that we probably need to really spend a little more time on it and, and do nothing but, instead of bringing somebody in for a, you know, a discussion for thirty minutes before a city council meeting, I think we really need to dedicate meetings to it. I have no problem to that. I have no problem supporting a bond issue. But, um, I don't feel like that it's wise on our behalf to do this and do a bunch of buildings that, once again, that we're tasked with providing air conditioning. Uh, how many buildings maintenance guys do we have?
We have one full-time guy that's dedicated to that.
One full-time, and when was he added? Two years ago?
No, he's been here before I was here, Brian Lee was, I've been here eight years and he was...
When we added, we added an additional.
Well, you're, you're probably thinking of David Cummings. David Cummings used to primarily work on building maintenance.
Right. But, and the council is somewhat, the, pretty much the council that's in place here, didn't we add like fifty thousand dollars for building maintenance repairs?
That wasn't for...
A couple of years ago?
Yes, sir, that wasn't for a person, that was for actual repairs, yeah.
For repairs.
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, uh, I don't know, I, you know, there's a point where I can, I can argue with you, and I know that's not my job. But I, I think that I've gone to great lengths in the last year and a half to put people in front of you and put concepts in front of you, because it was a direction I was given. So to say that you don't have any information, or you haven't had enough information, or you haven't had any meetings, all you have to do is ask me to, to have somebody at a workshop or a work session or council meeting, and they're gonna be there. And, you know, it goes back to, to the, to the estimates on, you know, that I got from the architects back in May. And, you know, the, the, uh, somebody had an issue saying that, I don't, they don't know where I came up with my numbers, where I can show you where I came up with everything. Multiple meetings, multiple developers, multiple consultants, met with y'all. And the direction that came out of that meeting in February, whereas you were the only one that was against building the city hall. You were the only one out of eight elected officials that were there that was against it. So as a city manager, I have to operate on a consensus. That's how I do my job. And I think the other thing you know about me is when I get direction, I'm not gonna come back to you every five minutes and ask you, well, how do I do this? And how do you want me to do this? I just do it. It's like, it's just like the economic development plan that we put together, the strategic plan. One of the three areas that was identified is this forty-three acre tract. And again, every time we've talked about this forty-three acre tract, we've talked about that concept. We said, this is the concept. Y'all have had every opportunity in the world to discuss this. I don't make the decisions. You guys give me direction, and I move forward with it. But, uh, that's one thing you know about me and that guy sitting over there is, you give me direction, that's gonna get done.
Well, and I, and I greatly appreciate that, and like I say, I don't, I don't feel like you've necessarily wavered. I don't feel like I have. I don't, you know. I think from day one, I said, if you're gonna build facilities, I think that you build facilities that make sense. I don't have a problem with fixing and, and updating, you know, our infrastructure and where we're at. But I don't think that you, that is, I've never, I don't, have I ever wavered on where I've been on it?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
But you're, but you're, but again, I deal with eight people, and you're one...
And I, and I understand, and that's all I'm saying. All I'm saying is, is it's, you know, I'm sitting and I'm elected in this one position, and I represent one vote. And all it is, is to, you know, I, I, I still feel like that it's my responsibility to share what I feel like we need to consider. And so I'm gonna share that. I, I have no problem supporting, you know, one facility that, that takes care of, you know, all the needs of the city. And I have no problem with that. But that's just my opinion. I feel like when you look at things like our abilities to do repairs, our rebuild, our abilities to do, to take care of multiple facilities, that's part of the problem we've had in the past. And you and I have discussed that on different occasions. When you have, you know, uh, you know, parks over here and public works over here, and everything's scattered out, it's more difficult to, from a logistical standpoint, to manage it. So I think the same thing with the city hall. To me, it would make more sense to have everyone... How many, how many employees do we have in the city hall currently? About thirty-five?
No, we have more than that. We have, we counted one day, Heather, and I'm trying to remember. Yeah, it was around fifty.
Less, less the water when they move out?
Well, uh, I don't know that they're gonna move out. We're just gonna reassign those employees. If you recall, we talked about that, where we would not reduce the number of employees. We would assign them positions that, that we were, let's say, gonna ask for in the next budget. They would take that position now, or positions that we'd gotten rid of before.
Okay. Well, like I say, I, you know, I, I don't, I'm not trying to say that there's, there's been any change or anything else. I just still personally don't feel like that, you know, we as a council, when we haven't even looked at the debt service on this, we didn't look at that till the night I asked it to be brought up by Mr. McClainey. We hadn't even, we had no idea what the debt service was gonna be on it.
No, sir, that's not correct. We talked, we talked about that the night that Trent was here. We talked...
We talked about it because I brought it up and I asked about it. That's why we talked about it.
No, uh, Mr. Fowler, again, it's not my job to argue with you, but I'm telling you, that information had already been discussed. One of the reasons that, as I told Mr. Brown, one of the reasons that we, I even talked to Trent about doing the P three for city hall was because it might have been, even been you that brought that up to me and said, okay, how's this gonna affect our debt service? So what I did was I went and found out how. I talked to Jennifer, we talked to Mark McClainey. We had all those meetings.
Okay, well...
And that was one of the issues true to, uh, that we talked about that now with Trent was, okay, why do we do the P three instead of doing a bond for all three of them and that type of thing? But it was all...
Because we weren't able to do it without raising taxes, but yet, have we even discussed the P three?
Yes.
I, I don't, well, once again, I'm sorry, I guess I've, I'm, I'm gonna have to, I either have amnesia or something, because I'm gonna tell you, I, I don't remember ever discussing the finances of a P three. I don't, I don't remember discussing the numbers.
Okay, I, I had... I had our EDC consultant here, and that was the sole reason that I brought him here, is I said, okay, I want you to explain this to the council, answer any questions that the council may have on it, whether it's the financial impact, how likely it is that a developer will do it. I, I, that's what he and I met with, and Rex was there. So I, I can't do anything other than put these people in front of you that know how to answer the questions that you want to ask, but you gotta ask them the questions. We've, how many times have we met...
I don't think I've ever been accused of not answering, not asking questions. I've never been accused of not asking questions. I can assure you that had there been something brought up about a P three, I would have asked on the M and O, what's it gonna cost us? And how are they gonna know what it's gonna cost us on the M and O side until we've discussed it and we know where we're at, what type of facility, how large, what's the long-term cost of it?
All I can tell you, Mr. Fowler, is that on July tenth, Trent Petty stood at that podium right there and would have answered any question that you asked him that night about a P three, any of them. I, I can't do anything, I can't, I can't do anything other than to make these people available to you to answer the questions or answer your concerns. I, I can't do anything other than that.
Okay, well, then I guess what I need to do then is for all my colleagues, I need to ask for forgiveness then, and ask that y'all consider looking for at least one meeting where we can have Mr. Petty and some of the people available to answer some of the questions that I have that I don't feel like have been answered, and I'm sure it's negligence on my part. But I just, I'm sorry, I don't remember a lot of these questions being answered. And I don't, I'd, I'd like to know how we're gonna pay for it. Um, you know, I'd like to make sure that we're able to do that without, you know, throwing a huge tax burden, you know, on the taxpayer in property taxes before we go out there and commit to something like this. And, you know, and if, if, if the council doesn't choose to do that, that's okay. I don't have a problem, but I feel like that it's our duty and our obligation as board of directors to answer some of the questions that I, for some reason, don't feel like have been answered.
Right, so I'll give you an example. Like tonight, Mr. Brown has expressed that he would rather do a bond for all three buildings. Or, or two buildings, if you combine the one. And now you want questions answered on the P three. Well, what I'm trying to get is city manager, and that's why I put this on the work session, is I need some type of consensus to move forward. Mr. Grow called me last week. Can we get a rendering of a two-story? Can we get a rendering of a building that combines them? Yes, sir, you absolutely can, if that's the consensus of the council. But, you know, I can't do a rendering for Dr. Trong that's a, you know, three separate buildings, and Mr. Brown that's two combined, and then, you know, Mr. Watkins that wants to separate them. What I'm trying to get, so that, again, going back to your saying that you didn't have enough information or, or anything to be prepared for this, what I'm trying to do is, is you've, you've told me that you would like to put this on the May election for a bond. What I'm trying to do tonight is to get some type of consensus. I don't care if it's two separate buildings, if it's one building, whatever. I just need a consensus from the council to say, this is what we want moving forward. We, we want you to look into this, or to get another rendering of this, or to change the, alter the concept of this. That's what I'm looking for, is just clear direction. And if, if you want me, I can get Trent in here to talk about any of this stuff. But all you gotta do is tell me that that's what you want, and then when he's here, you just have to ask him the questions that you want the answers to, because I can't, I don't know unless you guys ask him.
Well, I don't know that I've ever been one that's not provided clarity. And I guess if you're asking for clarity once from me, I have no problem supporting the bond election. I have no problem supporting bond election in May. I will support one building that houses all city facilities. I will have no problem supporting a separate fire station, but that's where I'm at. And unless I'm, unless you can show me things that are different, then, then I may be willing to, to adapt to that or change to that, to another plan. But at this point, I don't feel like we're in a position that, that that's what we can, are capable of doing. I feel like that we can do that, and I feel like that, that this thing was sold on economic development, on synergy, on those things. So in doing that, that's, that's the direction I feel like we need to go. So I guess for clarity, I haven't changed that since day one, I don't think.
You have not, but the, that night, from what you wanna call day one, I guess, is the meeting we had in February. Like I said, I had a late, eight elected officials at that meeting, and you were the only one that didn't want to proceed with it. Right.
But I'm just explaining, I've never changed.
But I'm, but that goes back to me explaining, it's like to Ms. None's con, comment. That's why there's not a rendering of a, of a two-story, uh, one facility building, because that was not the direction that I received in February, moving forward.
I had no problem with that.
Okay, uh, Councilmember, uh, Thompson, and then, uh, None.
Well, in addition to the concerns, I would think that, uh, the properties that are currently housed by city hall, the police station, and the other properties would be sold. So that would be an offset to some of the debt, I would think, going forward. And considering for the, um, buildings to be built. But, um, I don't know, I just have to say this, you know, you're talking about EDC, the properties EDC owns and the city. Understand it's a separate entity, but to me, all that property that's in there belongs to the taxpayers. That comes from taxes that have been allocated to you to develop whatever economic area is that we can develop. So to me, EDC still, that property belongs to each taxpayer in the city. And it's not, even though it's a separate entity, it still falls under that. So, thank you.
And you are correct, Ms. Thompson, it's all semantics, it's, it's the same. Uh, Councilmember, let's see, Watkins, and then Councilmember Grow. Ms. None, did you have your light on, or no? Okay.
Now?
Yeah.
Well, I don't wanna spend a lot of time talking about it. I, I think we need more than one workshop. I think we oughta meet once a week. We've got to make the decision on this what, by February? Okay. Well, to start with, uh, a few months back, I promised three people that are in this room with guns on that we, that I would support a bond package, and I will. I, I, I certainly lean towards, uh, one facility, not two or three scattered around. I'll differ from Mr. Brown on the, I think the fire station oughta be on the other side of this road, but that's probably personal. But instead of sitting around talking about what we can and can't do and will and won't do, I think we need to set up some workshops, uh, I don't know, starting next Monday.
Can't, okay.
Uh, and, and set them up far enough in advance so that we can know what we're doing, have the people here, so that all of us can hear it. Some things I hear, and some things I don't hear, and the ones I don't hear is because I can't hear, not because of, uh... As far as what belongs to the EDC and what belongs to the city, I'm not saying that something like this couldn't be done, but I'm, and it's not, I'm not saying that it's not city money. I mean, it's not the citizens' money, but the EDC has certain things they can and cannot do. And, uh, if everybody won't sit up there in the middle of the forty-three acres, or they want it someplace else, I'm gonna go with everybody else wants. Personally, I don't think it's that big of, uh, uh, economy driver, and I think that's part of what you have to prove to, just change it from the EDC. But anyway, I, I, I'm for the bond package, I'm for one, one facility, not scattered around. One of the things that helped me change my mind in the last few years about the single facility is the fact that we haven't got a jail. I'm a little iffy on putting everybody in one place with a jail. We hadn't got a jail, and it's off someplace else. So I, that, that's, that's done a lot to make me more interested in having it all in one building. You have your court, and your city hall, and your police, and fire, if needed, uh... The fire station to me is a separate item, but anyway, I'd like, I'd like to, uh, have some workshops on it, starting next week, unless somebody wants to start them next week, this week.
Thank you, Councilmember Watkins. Uh, Councilmember Grow.
Um, I have a couple of things. Going with my theme of the quarter record, I guess, of past meetings, uh, we had a workshop on January sixteenth, and the subject on that was the need for municipal facilities and the sale interest, uh, specific EDC and city, of wholesome city properties. And so we did have a workshop, and it looked like, from the notes, everybody was in attendance for that one. Okay, uh, on the other thing about the facilities, one building, two buildings, you know, doesn't really matter to me. Um, I guess my greatest concern is the parking for the officers and the equipment, you know. Uh, when I started as a law enforcement officer here, we were in one building. City hall, or the PD was on the other side, over here where the, um, um...
Municipal court is.
Uh, well, not the municipal court, but, well, municipal court office out of there also. But, uh, we're currently the permit people, um, exist. And so there are five jails over on that side. So we started out, when I started, we were in one building, and then we moved over to the, uh, grocery store. So, but my, my always, my thing of concern was my personal car was parked out in front. I lived, you know, two blocks away, so I, I rode my bike or walked to work a lot, and then I had a city car. Uh, but the, the police vehicles, the units need to be behind a secure fence. Um, and also the officers' vehicles need to be secure. So that's, you know, you know, that's, uh, my concern, so, thank you.
Councilmember Grow, since you have the internet up, internet up, can you look up when we, the council, this council will turn down having this, uh, this bond election placed on the November ballot?
That was August.
I believe it was the last meeting of August, could be the first meeting in August.
Yeah. No, it was August, that's when we had the vote. Just give me a second.
Sure, I just wanna say that I'm, I'm encouraged by the conversation we're having here tonight, that this council was now, you know, uh, two months out from calling for the election, now is interested in our municipal facilities that we're hoping to construct up here on this forty-three acres. We've been talking about this for nine months. It was voted down having it on the, uh, November ballot in August. Since then, we've had a minimum of six meetings, including this one. Where now, what I'm hearing is, we need to have more meetings. So as you can tell, I'm a little frustrated by that. We should have done our homework earlier on in the year. I understand two of the council members are new to the pro, new, I understand that, but there's five who aren't. If we wanted to have more meetings, we should have discussed this back in August, when we voted it down, when we voted to kick the can to the May election. We should have said, for the next three months, however many months, we want to have a meeting a week, as Mr. Watkins recommended. I've certainly got no problem with that. Why, why didn't anybody ask for that? Nobody asked. Yeah, we've had a meeting, well, we've discussed it, uh... Nobody asked. Yeah, we've had a meeting, well, we've discussed it, uh, you know, in passing, but nothing where we're discussing this specific. So with that being said, I am encouraged by this council. I hope we'll, we'll, uh, maintain our commitment to our city employees, who we've promised that we will have a, a ballot on the no- we will have a vote for a November ballot in February for the November election, for this bond election. I think it's something that, that is highly needed. I hope that everybody will come to the, to the meetings, well, next week, potentially next Tuesday, uh, with their, all the questions that they have, and hopefully we'll get them answered for them. We can have as many meetings, as many meetings as we need, up until February, when we call for the election. Uh, Councilmember Wat- uh, Groh, did you find, I think it was the first meeting, potentially, possibly the second meeting?
Well, we had, we, actually, we had several meetings. Um, the fourteenth is one, um, twenty-first looks like there was one, and so, so there were several meetings.
There were several meetings discussing this.
Right, and I just have to find the one that we had the actual vote on.
That, that's okay. I know it's sometime in August, so I think it was the last meeting in August. But we've had a minimum of six council meetings since then, and not once have any, has anyone asked to have a special meeting where we discussed, nothing, where we discussed only the municipal facilities. Uh, Councilmember Brown, did you have a question, or?
I'd like to collect a little bit of that, Mayor, I think I've had communications problems. Lots, in fact, I've got a, a possible bond election back at the first of, uh, October, so it's not that I have forgotten. I mean, it's, I've asked and asked, I have one from the Assistant City Manager. Just wanted to respect, respectfully, he hasn't, and just be a woman, resigning, placing a blessing in bonds to City Council President, so I have myself been asking.
I understand where you're coming from, talking about where, uh, where we have a full council, where we're discussing only the bond, the bond election, and whether we need it, if we don't need it, you know, and have the citizen input, have our employee input, have input from our, uh, our potential, uh, master developer, and also our economic development, uh, advisor.
And, and if you'll remember, you and I, I waited for you, and you were speaking with some citizen, uh, Mr. Phelps and I, about getting, you know, the agenda for last council meeting.
Yeah.
If it could happen, it might be the agenda, do you remember?
Well, that's when we were discussing the, uh, need for a bond study committee.
And also, where we need to go with getting the bond on the election, you and I and Phelps had that discussion definitely longer.
And that's, that's what we're doing tonight. Uh, Count?
Sorry, thank you.
I can hear you, I presume they could.
Well, I can hear, I've got my hearing aid turned all the way up. But I would like a little clarification, that I have been inquiring.
Duly noted, yes, sir. Uh, who's next? I can't see. Oh, Councilmember Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if you were through grandstanding, I was gonna make sure that, 'cause this was supposed to have been, well, I appreciate it. Uh, I thought this was supposed to have been, as Mr. Brown had requested and said, that when the conversation, when you were right down here with Mr. Phelps, is that not correct? Was it supposed to have been placed on the first meeting in November?
That's what we, we, if you recall, we-
Excuse me, if you would, just allow, Mr.?
No, that, there was a discussion at the, uh, at, over at the Civic Center, uh, with the, the mayor and I, and, um, Councilman Brown about the bond, uh, forming that bond committee.
Placing it on the first meeting in November.
Right, but, but, but I guess that there, there might've been some confusion, because it was placed on there. I, I think that, uh, City Manager, he had added so that at any time, the, you know, that you could form a bond committee. He had a committee, and he explained it, but I, there might've been some misunderstanding on that, but that part of it. But, yes, that was, discussion did happen between Councilman Brown and the mayor and I.
So it was my understanding that it was gonna be on the November, because, Mr. Brown, did I not ask you about why it wasn't placed on the November agenda, the November, the first meeting in November, in a conversation that you and I had?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
It was on there.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion regarding the, uh, two thousand and eighteen bond election? Okay, see?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Here we sit. Where do we, where are we going? Can I ask, where are we going from here, other than the joint session? Does the city manager need any direction at this point, or is it next week he needs direction?
Well, here's what's gonna happen, is, uh, Art tomorrow is gonna send out an email to all councilmembers, see what day next week y'all are available, so we can have a, a, a meeting regarding the bond election.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is that clear enough? Is that enough? Uh, Councilmember, Councilmember Nun?
Um, does it have to wait till next week? Could we do it Thursday?
Can post an agenda.
Oh, there's not enough time to post?
I'm sorry, uh-
Today's Monday.
After these seventy-two hours, you couldn't have it till-
Friday.
Oh, Friday.
Friday.
I'm available on Friday, if y'all would like to do it then.
Just, just so you know, there's a special, uh, called P and Z meeting next Tuesday evening, and I'm just, you know, we, we can work things out, I just wanted you guys to know that, that, so that, as you make your schedule.
Uh, who's next? Trey, Trey, did you stop your light on, or you have? Oh, you have something to say, okay.
So, what is the, uh, if you could provide a little leadership for us, and explain what all we're going to discuss, or how, what's the format do we need to, you know, instead of just saying, Art's gonna have, we're gonna have a meeting, that's a little bit broad, in my opinion, um, what's gonna be the topics? How, how are we gonna do, you know, is this gonna be at the library, what are, you know, where are we gonna go?
I would say, since we're not-
I mean, since we're not, I mean, I apologize to interrupt, but if we're talking about meat and potatoes, and it seems like there's confusion all the time, so I would like to get a little bit of this nailed down right now, because we're in a work session, so let's, let's discuss it, and let's get it, get it laid out, that way-
Certainly, what would y'all like to have on the agenda? Tell me.
Well, one thing I would like to have, Mr. Petty there, for sure. And I would like to ask the, the developer that is, is, do we have a contract yet, from any of the developers on any of the EDC property?
No, there's two that are interested, but they have not given an offer yet, so.
Okay.
Now, that's just in the negotiations and talk.
So it's a hypothetical, that they may or may not come through.
You could put it that way, yes.
Okay. So, um, you know, I, I think we for sure, at, at, at least need Mr. Petty there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-
I, absolutely.
And what, uh, you know, I, I, I think, you know, maybe our finance director, maybe, you know, ask Mr. McClainy to come, if we need to.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
Um, at, at this point, that, that would be a good start. I'm sure there'll be some more people that I would recommend come, but-
Maybe our police chief as well, so that he can discuss his opinion regarding having a single facility, as opposed to separate facilities. Give some input.
I think if we're gonna do that, why wouldn't we ask the, the, uh, people from North Hills? Is there anyone from North Hills that we could go there? They've built the most recent facility. Does anyone know anyone over there that might be willing to talk about the potential of, of, you know, one facility? I'm sure they went through this scenario, or went through this process, I would think.
Certainly. Anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, okay, Councilmember Groh, and then Councilmember Brown.
Um, the final vote was on the twenty-eighth, where the bond was denied.
Twenty, August twenty-eighth.
August twenty-eighth, and then, um, yes, uh, just to piggyback on Councilman Fowler, yeah, whenever we have these work sessions, we need to know the pros and cons of a single building to a multiple building, um, and the, the cost of those, you know, what is it, you know, as you go up, how much more is there gonna be than going wide, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Brown?
Uh, yes, I've actually spoken with Mayor Protem Scott Turnageo in North Riston Hills. A good friend of his, we're friends, and he said that he would, would love to facilitate a meeting with Mr. Purdue. I believe they call it over there, Director of Public Safety. I don't think they have a fire chief, police chief so much, but, uh, to discuss, because they have been totally happy with their joint building. Totally happy, so I don't know if they would come here, but I'm sure we could go, we could go there and meet, uh, it's been offered.
Over there?
Yes, sir.
The North Hills?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, I got a list of potential invitees. Is there any other, anything else y'all would like to have on the agenda? If you think of anything, you can certainly send them to us in the form of, us being Art, in the form of an email, and we'll make sure that it's on there, and that, uh, that whoever is present is prepared to answer that question. Uh, Councilmember Nun?
Do we have a rendering right now of the new fire hall that we're looking at, building?
No, ma'am, I said, it's almost done.
Okay.
Um, there's still, Hughes Brothers is still working on it.
Okay, and it's about the size of, what, what are we looking at?
Don't know for sure yet. I know it's gonna be a three bay, um, so we're still working on the square footage, um.
Do what? Smaller than two, I hope. Smaller than two, I hope.
For the square footage?
Well, yeah, two is ridiculous. Fire Station Two is off the charts.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, who's next? Councilmember, uh, Watkins?
Yes, I think we need to make it broad enough, and, and so perhaps we need to ask the city attorneys, if there's, how broad we can make it, because we've got developers that haven't signed saying they're gonna do any, do anything. They think that, they think they're gonna do something, so we need to know if the, if the, everything we need to know, where we're gonna put it, what it's gonna cost, uh, just, can we just have a general workshop on this, or we got to?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we don't leave anything out, that we need to talk about. I can't think what else comes to mind, but there's, there's a whole lot to talk about, and, and we seem to stretch out where everything we talk about, we need to discuss things and get it-
Let me ask this, would, because there is so much to talk about, and we're gonna have potentially so many people there, what if we had it on a Saturday, like an all-day session on a, on a Saturday? As, instead of having it two hours a night for over five nights, we had it all day?
I don't think there's something all day. In my opinion, it, you, you get redundant, and you, and people get, they get, for lack of better terms, jet lag, meeting lag, in, in a, in an all-day event, uh, and I don't think it's productive, I think you're, you know, if, if you're gonna do that, set up a, set it up for two weeks in a row, set it up, you know, set it up every Tuesday for two or three weeks. If we need to add more, we can add more.
Okay.
I mean, I think this merits a little bit of our time, and, and-
I agree.
So, uh, you know, I, I'm willing to dedicate time to it. Uh, I, I think that it would be wise, and maybe ask our, our counselor, that we also have executive sessions set on that, on that agenda, so that if we have any questions as far as, uh, legalities, land acquisition, any of that, that we can, we're able to discuss them, uh, in a more sensitive manner. Does that make sense, Mr. Counselor?
Well, I'm not sure what the questions are going to be on-
Well, they may not-
But yeah, absolutely, we can post an executive session and, uh-
If necessary.
Address questions that, that come up.
Uh, okay, so Councilmember, uh, Thompson, and then Councilmember Groh.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that when we're talking about the buildings, we need to consider, and I'm sure there is, uh, a formula that will accommodate growth, but as I heard someone say, that Mr. Barnes is anticipating to build a five-story building, is that correct? Okay, well, we're gonna have to have fire equipment to accommodate those kind of issues that the growth is going to be bringing. Also, we have the same thing to address with the police as well. So I think when we consider the buildings, I think that we need to make sure that there's ample space, that we're not looking like what we are now with the water tower. We can't house our equipment properly, so I say that, that is definitely a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilmember Groh, and then rounding it out with Councilmember Watkins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on the meetings, I think, uh, multiple meetings are far better than one big meeting, because the-
I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yep, but the, I think the range of information is so eclectic, that we should have, like, themed days, so one day we'd talk about the pros and cons of a single story, or multiple buildings to a multi-story, and then land acquisition, um, so just have, like, themed subjects. So that way, we're not having to occupy everybody's, you know, the people that, not us, but the people that are coming to visit us, like Mr. Petty, or other people, uh, we're not just burning up all their time. And then, on the, the forty-three acres, I don't think we should need to hang our hat on what developers choosing, what developers made a contract, it's irrelevant. The fact is, we need new buildings for a police station, a fire station, and a city hall. What, whoever wants to build whatever, God bless them, but that's irrelevant to what the needs are for this city. The city needs new facilities, period. If, if they decide to build on that forty-three acres, a, I don't know, a Taj Mahal, water park, who cares? But we just need the buildings, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Groh. Councilmember Wa- Watkins?
Okay, well, that, that's, if we're gonna meet every week, until we don't need to meet anymore, then actually, and it's gonna be a week apart, we don't actually have to really set up certain dates. We can have a preliminary and say, well, we're gonna meet on Mondays, or we're gonna meet on Tuesdays, or we're gonna meet, whenever we're gonna meet, and set up two meetings, and at the, at the, at the first meeting, or the second meeting, we can set up the third, if necessary. And I'm with Walter, I think you, you need to, uh, we need to, we keep coming at everything from, from all sides. We need to, there's, there's two or three things that are real important that we decide at the first meeting, and then it will, that, it will, then we'll know what we're gonna talk about the rest of the time, probably.
Mr. Phelps, did you have something?
I just wanted to add, just for the, uh, council to have this information, we're having to move our EDC meeting, uh, we're gonna be trying to call a December fourteenth EDC meeting to discuss, you know, this very issue with, uh, you know, what options EDC has, uh, for, uh, sure, you know, for facilitating this, this, this land for these buildings. Uh, but, you know, that'll be talked in, talked to with them. I just wanted you guys to know that meeting would take place on December fourteenth. Just, just so you'll know that date.
Thank you, Sarah. Anything else? Well, I wanna thank this council for their renewed interest in this development. Uh, this is something that's highly important for our, our community, and it's, uh, you know, a commitment we made to our, uh, many of our employees several months ago, that we were gonna try and get this off the ground. I think it's, the time has come for us to, you know, take that first step. If you have any, uh, things specific that you would like to have the, uh, the attendees to be prepared to answer, if you would, just send those questions to our city secretary, and he'll make sure that they're provided with that question, and, and they'll certainly come prepared. And again, we're gonna try and get this scheduled beginning next Tuesday, and then we'll have meetings as often as we need to, from there on out. With that being said, uh, it's now seven oh seven, we'll adjourn this meeting, and y'all wanna take a quick break before we begin our regularly scheduled council meeting? Okay, we'll take a ten-minute break, we'll be back here at seven seventeen. It's by Councilmember Ricky Brown.
May we bow our heads as we pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for your many abundant blessings, thank you for life itself, thank you for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Uh, moving right along to our announcements and events by our city secretary, Art Camacho.
Thank you, Mayor. The announcements for November twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen. With the Parks and Recreation, Haltem City will be hosting the Christmas on Broadway on Saturday, December second from two-thirty to five-thirty at the Haltem City Rec Center. And we'll have several activity, activities, including... Haltem City Community Counters will be available the second week of December and can be picked up at City Hall, the Rec Center, and the Public Library. The Haltem Senior Center will hold its Christmas party on Friday, December fifteenth at ten-thirty a.m. with special guest, State Representative Stephanie Click. Reservations must be made by Friday, December eighth. Our Public Library has its teen programs, family movie night, adult GED and ESL classes, and other library activities, and they are all listed on the library's websites for the dates and times. A special holiday bedtime storytime will be held on Thursday, December fourteenth at six-thirty p.m. and Santa and Mrs. Claus will also be present for photos and, uh, those attending are be asked to be sure to wear your pajamas. Carson Street Bridge is under construction on, uh, at State Highway one-twenty-one and remain closed for approximately ten months to a year. And frontage road information will be displayed on variable message signboards. There's also other numerous, uh, sit, other announcements or excuse me, other information available on different situations on the city website and you, uh, are welcome to view them also. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. Moving right along to our monthly financial report, uh, Ms. Fung, welcome.
Mayor and the city council, it's a pleasure to present to you the first month financial, which is ended October thirtieth, thirty-first of, um, two thousand seventeen. Okay, um, I would be happy to say that the, uh, the first month performance is really similar to last year. Um, we start with two point, twenty-nine point four million dollars with a revenue of four point six and a million and expenditure three point four million dollars. And now our ending fund balance as at the end of October is about thirty point six million dollars. If you look at the revenues, you can see that we have about six point four percent and the expenditure for the whole year, uh, for the first month is four percent. And this is very similar to last year, almost the percentage is exactly the same as last year. Okay, looking at the largest fund, um, the general fund, the beginning fund balance is estimated to be six point three million dollars and we have about one point nine million dollars, which is about five percent of revenue, and expenditure two point four million dollars, about six percent. So now our ending fund balance is five point eight million dollars. Okay, the public tax, um, at the end of October, we receive about, let's see, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, which is about three percent. And comparing to the previous year, um, last year we have about two hundred thousand at this time and it's about two percent. So it seems that some people are paying it earlier than the last year.
Uh, Jennifer, before you move on, Councilmember Fowler, do you have a question?
I do, but I have multiple questions. I'll wait till Ms. Fung's through.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fung.
Okay. All right, and then for the sales tax, you can see that, um, which is above what we have predicted. We receive about seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, which is about eight point seven percent. And, um, if we compare to the last year, which is about six percent, which is five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And this is the three-year comparison, you can see that current year is much higher. And if you compare to the other cities, our sales tax for October, we receive about a million dollars. We compare to last year is nine hundred and thirty-nine and, which is about seven percent more than previous year. And if we look at from January to October, which is about a ten point five percent increase compared to last year. So the sales tax appear to be very good, but, uh, wait until next month, I'll tell you more. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Fung. Uh, Councilmember Fowler.
Is that your complete report, Ms. Fung?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, u- under your, your general notes, uh, so correct me if I'm mistaken. Uh, we ended, fund balance ended, uh, thirty point six million, so you're about one point two million to the good that, that's above budget?
Um, which budget are you comparing?
Well, your, your beginning fund balance was twenty-nine point four.
You mean this one?
What we adopted and it's in your actual, for, for twen- for twenty-eighteen, we're thirty point six. Is that, was that the complete, is that the year-end?
No, this is October.
Right, so this is strictly October.
Right, and if we assume that we have twenty-nine point four to start with.
Okay.
But this, this number is before the audit, so that's why I call it's an estimate.
Okay, but you're estimating then, but you're still estimating a fund balance revenue of, of, of an additional one point two million, is that not correct?
Uh...
Year-end?
This is not estimate, this is actual. Four point six million dollars is the actual revenue.
Okay.
This is the actual, these two numbers are actual, the revenue and expenditure are actual. The only estimate is the fund balance, beginning fund balance.
Okay, but you have an ending fund balance of thirty point six.
Right. Yes.
So that's an estimate also.
That is an estimate. The only, the only thing is the beginning balance, we are not too sure what it is. Right now it is at twenty-nine point four, but when the auditors come and then they change our numbers, that will be the only difference that we have.
So do you anticipate that it adjusts down or adjusts up?
Up.
How much?
Don't know. It all depends on how much adjustment they want us to do.
Okay.
But I really predict this will be higher than that.
Okay, uh, under revenues, uh, an additional eight points, eight percent increase in, in the, uh, sales tax compared to last year. Is that, is, are you assuming that's, is that just strictly October or is that based on...
Strictly October.
Strictly, uh, so all these numbers are based just, 'cause I had a little difficulty interpreting that.
It's October.
But it is eight percent above what we ran this time last year to date.
Right, you mean this one, right?
Yes.
Yes, this is, this is from the state comptroller's office.
Okay, so those numbers are actually...
Those are actuals.
Already sent to the comptroller's office and passed through.
In fact, the comptroller already sent us the money for this.
Okay, what is the reason for that?
For the increase?
Mm-hmm.
More people purchase in Haltem City.
Okay, but I mean, is there, is there, is, is, so is that something we should, we're anticipating trending that way? Or, or we, or is it a, is, you know, I guess that's my question is, is it one time?
Okay, I'll give you more information on that. In November last year, we have a receipt of eight hundred and something thousand dollars more than usual because there was one company that paid the tax wrong. So next time when you see this number, it will, went thirty-eight percent down.
So that's gonna go thirty-eight percent down next time?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, so that would be good.
That's actual too, but, but the last November is very high. If you look at the chart here, you can see this one is abnormally high here. You see that? It's only one time that last year we received so much more, so that's why I make the percentage look bad. But if you look at the total, we're still high, I mean, higher than the previous period.
Okay.
So we're still doing good, except the percent really will scare you next time. It's thirty-something percent increase.
Thirty-eight percent decrease will scare me a little bit.
Right, I, it scared me too, but when you look at it, it's really good in a way. It's just, it's just this, this is really abnormal here.
Okay, n- next under general fund red... Okay. Next, under general fund revenues, under the, the building permit fees, the, the October numbers were high. Uh, the licensing permitting and all the numbers in the, in that were a hundred and sixty-two thousand. What was that due to?
Okay, due to more people filing for the, um, building permit.
Okay, is that, was it a rush, or is it something that we are anticipating to trend?
I cannot say. Do you, do you think?
So, I, I guess, are these some of the projects that we looked at on eight-twenty, are they, are they in this permitting number? No. So then it should, the number should, so we should be above budget in that?
Right.
Okay. Um, next one, interest income. You, Miss, comment about the higher interest rate and higher fund balances.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, was that primarily due to the fund balances being higher?
Higher than what we predicted.
So that allowed for additional interest income?
Right.
Okay. Uh, under general fund expenditures, non-departmental, uh, you're, you're running eleven point six percent in the first month. Why?
I have to look at this. I think it's some timing of the expenditure that we spend, because if we purchase something or whatever, then it will be high.
So this is not strictly personnel, this is just all general fund and-
Right.
-expenditures in that non-departmental area?
Right.
Okay. Same thing on like, our police is running ten percent. Those are the only two that were running-
Well, because they are purchasing something.
Upfront?
Upfront, uh-huh.
Okay. So, so then that, because, because it should be somewhere around eight point two percent, kind of is the-
Oh, yes, around, you know, I would say some, because it's normal, in a way.
Well, I mean, I can understand. I mean, it answers my question, if there's upfront purchases, that you load-
It's upfront purchase. It's the timing of the purchase that would cause it.
And that's, that's understandable. I just wanted to make sure, because your others were running, everything else was trending pretty much like it should, and then those are the only two that stuck out. So, okay, thank you, Ms. Fung.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Councilmember Grow?
Um, Ms. Fung, on the sales tax, last year, if you go back to your three-year, we had anomaly, because we shifted the tax from EDC back into the general fund and, and streets.
Right.
So, um, October's reflects that, so it's, it's not an anomaly, other than-
Okay.
-the fact that we just had an eight percent increase.
Right, uh-huh. And also, um, you can see that the, the actual October is really reflecting the August sales. So when you look at the number here-
Mm-hmm.
-those do not reflect the change of the allocation. So this allocation is the old allocation, this is the new allocation.
Okay, so we have, okay, so October didn't reflect the, the new allocation, so November will, will be a mu- a year-to-year equivalent?
Yeah. This one reflect the new allocation, but these two do not reflect the new allocation.
Okay, so come November, it should be parity now.
Um, November's still one month behind. So this number here, and these two numbers, in fact, reflect the old allocations still.
Okay.
Because you're just now seeing the sales tax come in, being diverted from EDC into general fund. So, you're not gonna be able to follow that blue chart, because it's gonna trend more towards the purple line. And especially with the November, with the green in November, because that was an anomaly that, that the-
Yeah, the, yeah, the one-time purchase, so.
But those, the blue and the green are from old sales tax numbers excluding the diversion from EDC-
Right.
-coming now into general fund instead of going there. So you don't really have a good baseline yet.
Okay.
That's correct, uh-huh. So if we look at these two numbers here, these are the overall allocation as well.
Okay.
So that's why this one is, if it is a new allocation, it will be so high.
When do you expect it to, I guess, level out?
Well, this one will level out the December one. The December one is the new allocation. This one is new allocation. The green one, starting from here, is new allocation.
So in January, we should see-
Right, uh-huh.
-a parity between previous year to this year?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for Ms. Fung? Thank you, Ms. Fung, excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Moving right along to our Fire Department update by our Fire Marshal, Fred Knapp. Welcome, sir.
Council and Mayor, it's my honor to present the third quarter statistics for you tonight, for this to be for July, August, and September. You can see the, uh, total alarms are pretty much, been pretty stable through the summer months. The blue line represents the total calls and the breakdown of, and the colors of, of other calls, EMS being our main call for service. Property damage, you can see in August and September, uh, the numbers look really tall, but remember, really one bad house fire can bump those numbers up pretty bad, so. But one of the things we're looking at now is looking at pre-incident value on buildings and versus the loss. So the difference between those two numbers, of the fires that we had, the values of the buildings before the fire were valued at, uh, just under six hundred thousand dollars. So we had, uh, just over a hundred thousand dollars lost, so we saved roughly four hundred thousand dollars worth of property value, which stays on the tax roll. So that's something we've, we've just began to start tracking to get a better picture, or get another view of, of what kind of job we're doing. You, hopefully, within the department, you wanted to see that gap get bigger right there. So, total fires, which, which is what we're looking at with, with loss, in, uh, in July, we had thirty-seven, August twenty, and September nineteen. Um, in July, there's three of them were incendiary, two in, uh, August, and three in September. And again, one of them we attributed in August to a juvenile fire center that we will take to the, our counseling program.
Um, Dr. Knapp?
Yes.
What's an incendiary, okay, you said you had total number of fires, and then, uh, incendiaries were three. So, I'm a former police officer, so-
That would be-
-I'm dumb on this.
That would be where somebody sets something on fire intentionally.
Okay.
Could be a car fire, a dumpster fire.
Okay, so that's an arson?
Yes, that would be, it would be considered an arson if, if we took it to that length. Sometimes we'll, we'll handle it within the city, or take it, depend, depending on-
Okay.
-the circumstances of-
It's not like a, a wire overloaded and causing the fire, it's somebody intentionally?
That would be an intentionally set fire.
Wow.
That's a good question. On the services side, uh, in July, had ninety-two inspections completed with fourteen violations, a hundred and forty in August, and one hundred and ten in September. For our public education, this graph basically illustrates the beginning of school year. Because every time we, uh, get into Haltem High School, you're looking at about thirty-five hundred people every time we go. We attend most of their fire drills now, simply because that's the largest collection of people in town. So it's, it's a big hazard, and they do a very good job of, of, uh, working with it. This includes all the events that Lieutenant Wood conducts. He's doing a very good job. Any questions?
You already, you already answered mine, so.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see here. Uh, Councilmember Thompson, do you have a question for Fire Marshal Knapp?
Sorry, I noticed on your last, uh, display, uh, in July, would that not include your junior fire camp and police camp?
Yes, there were thirty kids in that, so.
Okay.
Got everything? Okay, any other questions or comments from the council for, uh, Fire Marshal? Uh, Councilmember None?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of months ago, I'd asked for some specific information about the Fire Department, and I still have the issue, kind of, you know, questions about the sleep deprivation, you know, that could occur because of the, um, the hours worked on, on duty. Um, how, year-end, um, how's your overtime compared to previous years?
That's a good question. We've just gone through, and we're in the process right now of, of hiring several new employees, that, that will get them up. At one point, we were five, six employees down, which was, which in order to keep the staffing up, it was bumping in overtime. It was just eating up the overtime, which puts people, when they're on forty-eights, then it goes to a seventy-two, because they don't work the, the, uh, forty-eight and a forty-eight. They'll work a forty-eight and a twenty-four. So with the coming of these new employees on, onboard, that we're, we're anticipating a reduction in the need for overtime, because all our positions will be full, or ne- nearly full. So that, that is the goal of what, one of the big pushes of why we're getting these new people hired.
Okay. So do you have a hard time getting them hired, or is that, is it just?
We, we don't have any harder time than all the other towns around here. It's sometimes we've had issues on, on the numbers of, of employees that are, are applying for the jobs. But it's not just here, it's, it's, it's all over the metroplex.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. So, so really, um, again, I never received the information I'd asked for, but, um, workers' comp, none of that is, is going into play with your over, existing overtime?
I haven't seen any injuries come across that would be directly attributed to that, just at a cursory look, but I can check with, uh, Chief Bynum and see if we can nail that, nail that down a little bit more for you.
Okay, okay. I just asked for a pretty, pretty implicit report, and I'm still wondering. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember None. Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Mr. Knapp, do you have the numbers? Do you know what the overtime is?
Uh, I don't have it with me tonight, no, sir.
Okay. Not even for Oc-, or does Ms. Fung, do you know what the overtime? Mr. Manager, do you know what the overtime was for October, at least just for October?
No, sir.
Okay.
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Fire Chief. Fire Marshal, I should say, Fire Marshal. Uh, moving right on to our regular agenda. Agenda item number three is the minutes from the November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, City Council meeting. Do you have any, anybody have any questions or comments regarding this? Seeing none, we are in line for a motion. Dr. Trong?
Man, Council, I go ahead and make a move to approve the minutes of the meeting of November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember, Councilmember None?
And that's for a second, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion for approval in a second. If you would please, Councilmember Watkins, do you have a question? No? Okay, if you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Moving right along to our, our agenda item number four, revised ethics policy. Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, last City Council meeting, you approved on the first reading a revision to the ethics policy. I'll answer any questions you may have on second reading.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for our City Manager regarding the revised ethics policy? Okay, we're seeing none, we are in line for a motion. Councilmember Fowler, do you have a question?
Well, I don't mind, I don't mind making a motion, but, um, on, uh, I guess, so the same policy would, as far as recusals, Mr. Olson, would, would follow, or any, if you have any conflicts of interest, would follow the same format that it would on council or, is, is, so that's typically the way we follow this policy reads for a recusal.
If I'm understanding your question, we're, we're not changing anything on the conflicts of interest for council members or EDC members having to recuse themselves. If there's a financial conflict of interest, then either if you're on the council or the EDC board, you're required to fill out an affidavit and abstain from participation in the matter.
Okay.
That would still apply.
Okay, so I just want to make sure it still applies for both in, in the way this was written, okay? Okay. Uh, in that case, if you need a motion, I would-
Yes, sir.
Move for approval of ordinance number two zero one seven dash zero two six dash zero one, amendment to the, amendment or revision to the ethics policy, uh, on first reading, or second reading, I'm sorry.
Second reading. Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval. Uh, let's see here, uh, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, sir.
On the second reading, okay? Uh, if you would, please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council. Uh, moving right along, agenda item number five, rescheduling the December twenty-fifth City Council meeting. Again, Mr. Wayne?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, as our Christmas holiday is the twenty-fifth, falls on a council meeting, we put this on the agenda. Traditionally, the council, if a meeting falls on a holiday, will discuss mov- moving that meeting, so that's why we put it on here.
Okay, do you have any, uh, let me see, go back here, just a second.
We also let the department heads know that, I also want to listen, uh, the department head will have time if they, if we make the decision tonight, uh, they'll have time to make any adjustments to anything that would fall on the December twenty-fifth, in regards of public notices or publications for anything.
What did we do last year? We canceled, we didn't, yeah, we only had one meeting in December, for those of you who weren't here.
Generally do, but that's where we want to make sure that, according, uh, you know, you have to make, take action toward that, one way or another. You can reschedule it, or you can just cancel it.
Councilmember Fowler, do you have a question or a comment?
Uh, this past practice is typically that the meeting in, the second meeting in December is typically canceled, and any agenda items are moved to the first meeting in January has been past practice.
Okay. Is that in the form of a motion, or?
Um, sure.
Okay. So we have a motion to cancel the second meeting in December and move all business to the first meeting in January. Uh, Councilmember, uh, let's see here, Thompson?
Sorry, Mayor, that's for a second.
Okay, motion for approval in a second. Uh, okay, if you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Uh, moving right along to agenda item number six, the Ta- Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors elections. Uh, again, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Man, Council, the, uh, directors of the Tarrant Appraisal District are up for reelection. The nominees are Daniel J. Bennett, Mr. Terry Moore, Mr. Mike Lehman, Mr. John Mollenu, Mr. Mike O'Donnell, Mr. Joe Potoff, Ms. June Shrewsberry, and Mr. Mark Wood. Um, as you know, our city has eighteen votes, and we can distribute them however you would like. Um, I did receive a, an email from the, the North Richardson Hills City Manager, letting me know how their council's gonna vote, and the Colleyville Mayor. If you're interested in that information, I can provide it to you.
Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this? Uh, let's see, Councilmember Fowler?
I would be interested in the, uh, position that our sister city's taking on this.
Yes, sir. The City of North Richardson Hills is putting all their votes towards Mark Wood, and the City of Colleyville is putting their votes towards, uh, Ms. June Shrewsberry.
And as, as you'd stated, Mayor, um, we can place all our votes to one candidate or divide them amongst any candidates?
Correct. And ju- and you didn't ask this question, but I'm gonna offer you this information as well. It's my understanding that BISD, which is the Burwell Independent School District, also supported, uh, Mark Wood for reappointment. But yes, to answer your question, you are correct on that.
And could you provide some background, what the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors does, just for the viewing audience?
Essentially, all that they do, or what they do, is they appoint the appraisal review board members. Those are the people who, uh, if you want to protest your property values, you go to them. Those are the people who, uh, if you want to protest your property values, you go to them. Uh, the, the Board of Directors itself, essentially all that they do, they're, they're a governing body. Uh, they, uh, make decisions regarding budgetary, uh, and personnel decisions.
They're, they're, they're also, uh, they're also the direct hire for the appraisal district, uh-
The chief appraiser.
Chief Appraiser, is that not correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the current chief appraiser is the second one in the district's, district's history. We do have a member, uh, who, uh, someone who is recommend, being recommended by, I believe it's the City of White Settlement, uh, Mr. Uh, Daniel Bennett, he is here in the audience. If you would like, or he can come up and give you his-
I'd love for Mr. Bennett to come up.
Okay, sure, Mr. Bennett, would you like to come up and-
Absolutely.
Speak to the council for a few moments?
Uh, Daniel Joe Bennett, I live in White Settlement, four zero eight Pemberton, uh, mayor, council. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. The, I don't know if TAD sent the informational packet out to the city with all the bios. It sounds to me like they didn't. Yeah. You're not the only one not to receive them. Now, I did send an email to your city manager, your city secretary, and, uh, I believe when he responded to me that I needed to send each and every one of you a separate email. I thought it would be distributed amongst all of you. Uh, this is a position I did not seek. I was nominated, and my city called me the following day and said, Joe, will you accept? And I said, absolutely. And yes, White Settlement has supported me, but I have eight entities now that has, that have voted for me. And yes, Mark Wood did get all of Birdville ISD votes. He graduated Birdville. The trustee president was very gracious to me that evening. I think he wanted a little more discussion on the board, but you let things go. But I am happy to say that HEB gave me half the votes. They thought I was worth it. And I'm sure there's other people that felt maybe I should have gotten a few of their votes, but I didn't. And I understand why. Mark, he graduated Birdville, he's done well locally, but he has been on the board for two, uh, it'll be a second term. Now, I think TAD has made mistakes, they're making mistakes, they're not accountable for their mistakes, and they certainly don't own up to them when they do make mistakes. You usually find out after the fact. You're being told, certain things go out on certain days, the certified role, you get revisions immediately. These are things that are being done to you. And I'm sure there are board members that haven't explained to you why that's happening. And I think that's why White Settlement nominated me, because I'm gonna tell them why. Um, if they have a question, I'm gonna go find out why. I think it's important. Now, when I was down at Mansfield ISD, one of the gentlemen, the trustee, after I presented, I said, you know, I'm a nominee today, I'll be back tomorrow. Well, after I sat down, he immediately says, I'll never forget this, and, and it happened in Saginaw, too. I did get Saginaw votes. He said, well, I know so-and-so on the board, and if we have an issue, I can call them. And I immediately thought, they went through the STEM project, teaching critical thinking. I thought to myself, that guy thinks he's gonna be on the board forever, and the fact that he's gonna be calling somebody, shouldn't TAD call him? Shouldn't TAD call the superintendent? Shouldn't the business office, the CFO? That's ju- that is TAD's job, to be a servant. We shouldn't be chasing TAD around the county, and that's what we're doing. And HEB's given me ninety-seven votes, Northwest, one hundred and eighteen, Hasslet, their votes, three, Saginaw, two, Kennedale, ISD, eight, Kennedale City, all their votes, six, White Settlement, of course, seven, and Forest Hill, six. I got two hundred and forty-seven votes. And I truly believe that Eagle Mountain Saginaw's gonna step up, and Carroll ISD's gonna step up for me. Now, I know Mr. Law has said many things in the press that has upset a lot of people, but those things are in the past. But that mentality that's happened before will happen again. We have engaged board members, then we have disengaged board members. We all should be superstars on that board, and I can tell you right now, we don't have superstars. And I'm not saying I am a superstar, but I'm accessible, and I can hold the chief appraiser accountable. Say, how do you do that, your one vote? Well, back on November, November tenth, I was at their meeting. And when they broke out of executive session, they had done an evaluation of the chief appraiser. Well, they come forward, they sit at their table, and what happens? Johnny Bennett, who's not running, makes a motion to approve his three percent increase in his car allowance. He did such a wonderful job this past year, he got a pay cre- pay increase. Well, who seconds the motion? Molyneux. What did Wood and O'Donnell do? They sat there, didn't object, there was no discussion, passed five-zero. Now, if you think Jeff Law did a wonderful job last year, well, then you agree with the three percent increase in the five-zero vote. I'm not sure I do. Now, wouldn't it have been nice had TAD said, Mr. Everett, would you please have your council evaluate Mr. Law for us? We like Halton City's input. Did that happen? Do you know there's a form for that to happen? I have it right here. I can pull it out and show everyone, I can give you a copy tonight. Wouldn't it have been nice to have somebody's opinion when something's being done to you, telling them that we don't want that to happen anymore? It's not, this is, these are the interactions that you're being left out of the loop. And when they make these arbitration litigation, uh, decisions for you, I found out why. It's a business. It is a business decision by TAD. They have to be responsible doing your business for you. They tell you what happened after the fact. That affects your budget. That affects your ability to, to govern. And they should bring you in on certain things, and they don't. So tonight, I ask you, I stand here before you, asking you for your votes, because I will do this for this council, and that's my pledge to you. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, are there any questions from the council?
I have a question, if you-
Okay.
And just for the op- I appreciate the oppo- you, you had sent the information, I do appreciate that. I didn't read your, your information.
Oh.
Uh, can you just give me a little bit of background of what you feel like makes you uniquely qualified, other than I understand, and I have a great deal of appreciation for, for questioning?
I, I have an engineering background. I designed radar systems back in, in another life. I ran a hedge fund for ten years. I know compliance. I know what it is when you do a performance audit. I know when it is when you do a financial audit. I know when things, through a compartmentalized situation, is not being done, when one hand doesn't know what the other hand's doing. And this is the things the board, as expertly, um, described, is they oversee the chief appraiser and the budget. Well, I think the first thing that needs to happen to TAD is to be audited. When's the last time TAD was audited? I can't tell, I, can anybody here tell me? Mr. Everett, you, you were on the board.
Yeah, you're right, you should be.
So, I mean, there's just things that, if, let's say that I had sixty-three opinions given to me by your taxing entities. And if I said, Chairman, I make a motion that we bring in additional input before we evaluate the chief appraiser, and he tables the motion. So what will I have to do? Sit there and take it? No, I will reach out. And you can provide that information to me, and I'll provide it to the board. This, this is the input we need. These are the proactive steps we need. TAD is a servant. You guys are the ones that should be served. Do you feel like you're getting good service? No. And you're not. That is where, we're gonna, as a collective group, as these entities have voted for me, if I get, if I get your votes tonight, together, that's what we're going to do. We're gonna move TAD, we're gonna move that needle back to servitude, and that's where they belong. And if they don't ask you your questions, give you the kind of service you want, well, as Board of Director, I'm gonna fix it. And that's what you need. You don't need these go-along, get-along smiles. That's what you have right now. And if North Richmond Hills wants to give their votes to Mark Wood, he could be a terrific guy. But has he provided you the service you need? And I've done over two hundred and fifty hours of open records requests with TAD. There's a lot more missteps by TAD than just not providing you a certified tax form on the twenty-fifth of July. But those, too, are going to be issues that will be fixed, that will be made known to the board, that will start correcting this attitude and culture at TAD that has taken away the very essence of what you all do, provide a budget and service to these people behind me. And we need to work together, me as a director, you as a council, to fix those issues. Now, being a hedge fund manager, being in compliance, you know, working with federal agencies, also raise money to help doctors. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, it does. And, and, but if you don't mind, could I res- if you, could I get one of the copies of the questionnaire that we've, you know, I've been, I've been around here for quite a few years, and I've never s- you know, I've never seen it in all the years that I've been involved, and it's a little, that tends to irritate me a little bit that-
Well, let me, let me-
Especially all the fallout that we get from, you know, our tax revenues are based in our, and it affects our citizenry-
I know.
-amount of, of appraisals.
It's done it to our city, it's done it to me personally. And I told my city, look, you nominate me, I accept, but I'm not doing this for you. I'm doing it for everybody. And of course, you know, I'm gonna be a director, I have to. You know, there's no preference of treatment for White Settlement. I'm gonna treat Northwest ISD the same as I'm gonna treat Everman ISD. I've got a, a meeting with the, uh, superintendent. Crowley tomorrow, I'm gonna be down at Crowley to meet with Mr. McFarland. I'm gonna hopefully earn his votes. But yes, here it is, a very simple form.
Yeah, if you don't mind. And then one other question, uh, Mayor, this is based, uh, eighteen votes is, is, the, the five slots are filled by the five highest vote getters?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, just for some background, Joe Potoff, he was the, uh, board, I think the term they used as president or chairman when I was there. And Mr. Molyneux, Molyneux was there as well. The others, besides, uh, Mark Wood, I, I don't know any of them. But I will, I will agree with you, uh, but I was on there from two thousand and eleven through two thousand and thirteen, and I was never so happy. It's when I got off of there. I mean, you know, it's, it's dysfunctional. Whatever the chief, chief appraiser said, that's what, that's what went, and-
But, but Mayor, we can change that.
Oh, I agree, I, I agree. It's, you know, one step in the right direction, yet, uh, I was never so happy. I was excited about going, you know, getting on there. I was also excited about getting off of there.
Like, it's like buying a boat. Best day of, in work day, you know. Been there, done that. But this is not gonna be a boat for me. This is gonna be a full-time position. I am in a unique position to do this full-time. I ran a hedge fund, I haven't done anything since oh nine, I've been politically active since fourteen. I've worked very hard to get very good people elected, and I'm gonna work now, I've become a candidate, not in a thousand years, I thought I'd be a candidate. But it's time, gentlemen, and, and ladies. And I, if you wanna vote for me, thank you. I appreciate your consideration. But we're gonna do this together, and I, and it's not gonna be a boat. It's not gonna be the best and worst day of my life. It's gonna be the best day of our beginning.
You know something else? You and I talked about this. Something else that I disagree with, the cozy relationship, the chief appraiser, I shouldn't say the chief appraiser, that the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors has with our, uh, uh, the, uh, can't think of their name now. Uh, the, uh, we talked about this.
Yeah, I'm trying to rec- remember.
It's, uh, Glenn, not Glenn Whitley, but that, uh-
Oh, Crosby?
Commissioners.
Com- oh, 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 yeah, oh, the Commissioners Office.
Yes. If you'll notice, what'll happen is typically after all the municipalities have voted, they vote the last day, typically. And they'll call down, essentially, and speak to someone at the appraisal district, how many votes for, do these people have? So they'll know where to, where to send their votes, so they can get their person or persons. Because they have, they being, besides Fort Worth ISD and City of Fort Worth and Arlington, essentially have, have the pool, they have the most votes. That's something that really, uh, you know, it's always upset me about that.
I, I wanna, uh, elaborate a little bit on that, Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'll be brief. And if I, if the council doesn't want to hear this, just please tell me, stop, and I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet. I want to respect the time, your time tonight. I'm gonna, this commissioner court thing, when you look at the vote totals, let's say Johnny Bennett, six entities voted for Johnny Bennett last time. Mark Wood had, I think, seventeen, but he was a commissioner court nominee. Right?
Right.
Nobody else nominated Mark Wood. It was a commissioner court nominee. So what happened, on December seventh, at nine o'clock in the morning, when their meeting started, after they sang whatever they sang, you can watch on video, the commissioner court administrator, G K, gets up and says, we have the same thing that you said, uh, Mr. Lang, that we have this coming before the court today. And I want to remind the court, we have two nominees, Mr. Johnny Bennett and Mr. Mark Wood. I called TAD the other day, I called TAD yesterday, and found out that Mr. Wood has enough votes to be nominated, and the court has five hundred and sixty-two votes. Immediately, one of the commissioners quipped, as we did last year, I want to put all five hundred and sixty-two votes to Mr. Johnny Bennett. Now, he meant two years prior, because it's not an every-year election, it's every odd year. So he misspoke. But the point I'm saying is Johnny Bennett got elected with five municipalities in his corner, and Potoff, I think, got elected with six. I have eight, and you make nine. Now, Mark Wood had seventeen, but once again, he was commissioner court nominee. So they were gonna get Mark Wood in regardless of whether, but he, they marketed him pretty good in twenty fifteen, is what they did, because they did not want to split their votes. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Bennett, uh, Mr. Fowler? Your light's still on, did you have other questions?
No, I didn't know if you, if you, uh, got his name and address for the record, I didn't, I didn't hear your address.
Four zero eight Pemberton. It's in White Settlement. It's named after a family. Takes ten minutes to fill this out, and I think every Board of Director should fill this out also. And I'll make a motion, that happens. And if it gets tabled, guess who's gonna know about it immediately? Anybody that wants to hear about it, just go know immediately that, hey, it was tabled today. They, they don't want to fill it out. They don't want to be held accountable. They don't want the public to come in an open records request and see that Marlin Hall said this, or Mr. Wood said that, or Mr. Potoff said this deliberately. It's sat on a table, not but from where the, the mayor is in this table right here. And I asked the information officer, I said, Mary, don't they ever use these? She goes, no. I said, how old is this form? She goes, four years old. I said, has they, have they ever filled it out? No. I said, can I have one of those? Yeah. So I, I put, immediately put open records request in, got it. Now, I want to ask you a question. On that audio, once you hear it, do you think G K did an open records request for the vote totals the day before they voted? Isn't he required to do an open records request? We are, I am, maybe you guys are, um, not supposed to do that, because you're councilmen, but you're also citizens. The citizens behind you, and you are held to the same standard, but not the commissioners' court. So if I did an open records request tomorrow, and said on December sixth, all communications between the commissioners' court and TAD for the twenty fifteen election, supply all documentation, guess who did that? I didn't. Guess what I didn't get? It's in, it's in, it's in my records. I think it's not right to the people behind you. I got the audio on my phone, if you want to hear it.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Bennett from the council? Okay, seeing that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
And I want to thank the council for their time and consideration, and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so again, we're- Okay. It has to be worded specifically?
No, just like, we got eighteen votes, how they want it.
Okay. Councilmember Fowler, do you have a question or comment, or make a motion?
I had one last question. Uh, is there a term limit on this, uh, Tarrant Appraisal Board?
No.
It's every two years.
I understand that elections are every two years. They reelect all five positions.
Oh, no, oh, no, uh, Mr. Potoff, Henderson, his name's on the building.
Right, no, I, I understand, I, but I was-
Yeah, there's no term limits.
Should there be term limits? Well, then we'll have that discussion. Me, you, and everybody else. I'll make that motion. That's what, if that's what you want.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
I don't mind working myself out of a job, gentlemen. I've done it before. I'll do it for y'all. Thank you.
One last question, Mr. Mayor. Our current appraiser's been recently hired in what, the last, I thought he fairly new?
Jeff Law?
Yes.
He, he's been there for a while. Uh, he, I think he's the
He's only the second.
He's only the second. I, yeah, John Marshall was the first. I wanna say Jeff Law has been there ten years. May, give or take, maybe a little longer than that, but, yeah.
Was that during all the debacles that they had a few years ago with all the over appraisals and?
Uh, he was there. He, he being Jeff Law was there.
Yes, sir.
Because when I was there in two thousand and eleven through two thousand and thirteen, Jeff had been there five years, six years, something like that. So Jeff was there during all the, the debacle you're referring to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So we are in line for a motion. Uh, council member Gro.
I'll make a motion that we put all eighteen votes for Daniel J. Bennett.
Okay. Motion for all eighteen votes going towards Mr. Bennett, who spoke here tonight. Uh, council member, uh, who's next? Councilmember Fowler.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second that motion, and, and I, I don't think this is a, um, any direct reflection on Mr. Wood, but I think it's a, a good opportunity periodically. You know, we have term limits here in our own community, and I think that, um, you know, this kinda frustrates me as a, as a representative of, of our constituents that we've never seen this, and, and I've been involved for eleven or twelve years, and I've never had the opportunity to have input in the appraisal district board. And I think that if we, you know, I've, in all the elections that we've had, I've never had someone take the time to even come and approach the council and ask for their support. So I do greatly appreciate that. And I feel like, you know, after, you know, your resume and the other things prior to that, that I'd read, I feel like you're qualified enough to, you know, a candidate to go in there and at least have the opportunity on a two-year basis to see how Mr. Bennett could perform.
Absolutely.
I would like to second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second to, uh, allocate all eighteen votes for Mr. Bennett, okay? Uh, if you would, please signify your, will your votes, or ratify your votes.
Should I put that resolution number on this? Is, is it, is it fine?
I think it's fine. You said agenda item number six, so. Okay, motion passes.
Let's see. Walter, would you mind, did you, would you mind stating that you
Yep.
Passed resolutions given to you?
Uh, the resolution Romeo dash two zero one seven dash zero three two dash zero one, all eighteen votes for Daniel J. Bennett.
Trey, you're okay with that?
Yes, sir. I'd second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, and good luck. Thank you, council. Moving right along, agenda item number sec, uh, seven, a replat being P dash oh one three dash one seven. Ms. Bachelor, welcome.
Evening, Mayor and council. This is a replat of P zero thirteen seventeen. We're here to conduct a public hearing and consider action on the application of Pantheon Construction for approval of a replat creating lot one R one, block nineteen, Watauga addition, from all of lot two R, block twenty-one, Watauga addition, and all of lots two through nine, block twenty, all of lots one, two, ten, eleven, twelve, block nineteen, and portions of lot three, four, seven, eight, nine, block nineteen, the original town of Watauga, located in the M one industrial district, creating, containing approximately three point four five four acres, and locally known as fifty-eight fifty Huddleston Street. The applicant proposes to create one lot to develop a new eight thousand square foot commercial building. On November fourteenth, twenty seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of P zero one three one seven by vote of three to zero. And the P and Z staff report has all the attachments that were presented. If you'll look at the screen, and I'll get to the right one. There we go. This is the property, and this is, um, for some of us older folks, this is the Robert Black area up there on Huddleston. This is the, uh, flat, where they'll have a building up here on the northern part of the, of the, uh, property. The applicant is here, and I'm available for any questions of council.
Thank you, Ms. Bachelor. Are there any questions or comments from the council for Ms. Bachelor? Uh, council member none.
Um, is this for retail or, or?
Commercial.
Commercial?
Mm-hmm.
And do they already have clients, or is it just kind of a
The applicant is here. They're a, um, um, subcontractor for utility construction.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. None. Are there any other questions or comments for Ms. Bachelor? Seeing none, I'll now open the public hearing at eight fourteen for anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding this agenda item. Again, this is agenda item number seven. Welcome. If you would, just play, uh, please state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Tony Walker, Vice President of Pantheon Construction. We're requesting the replat to, um, move our facility into Holtham City. It, um, is an eight thousand square foot office building just to house our office, uh, maintenance facility. We have a hundred, right at a hundred and five employees. We're looking to expand for more crews. We, we do probably ninety-eight percent of our work is by one customer, and that's Atmos Energy. We maintain, install new gas distribution lines.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Uh, council member Gro.
Um, where are you, uh, ma'am? Where are you currently located at?
We ha, we have two locations. Um, we are lo, we are relocating our, um, facility. We're at fifty-one oh four David Strickland in South Fort Worth.
Okay. So you're, are you moving from David Strickland up to here, or is this gonna be a whole new facility and have that one down there?
No, we will be closing that. We're out, we've outgrown that one.
Okay. Well, welcome to Holtham.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Ms. None, did you have a question? Uh?
I do. Thank you for coming back up. Um, I'm always concerned a little bit about traffic and large vehicles and that kind of thing. Do you have semis, tractor trailers? What, what do you have? Anything like that, or is it mainly?
We do.
What do you do?
We do have three semis. We have two now, and I'm in the process of buying, uh, the third one. We work Monday through Friday from seven to five thirty. Usually our guys pull in around six forty-five, and unless we're working emergency, we're out by five thirty. Um, we have three semis. Two of them will pour, will pull bore machines to job sites. The third semi hauls, um, any any equipment that, sometimes that we have to take delivery of pipe and materials at our shop if it comes in before Atmos actually gets the project ready, or if we're, say, at, we, at the Colonial, we're doing a big job there. There's nowhere to store that at the job site. A lot of times we'll have somebody who has an open field or an open lot that we can rent and that. And so we have to take material back and forth from the job. That doesn't happen very often, but we do have one.
Okay, so access would be on Huddleston or?
Yes.
On Huddleston? And this is already zoned, what, M, M one?
M one.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. None. Uh, council member Fowler.
Uh, this may be for Mr. Van Noon Hughes, and I'm sorry, I stepped out for just a moment. Could I catch your name?
Tony Walker.
Ms. Walker.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Van Noon Hughes on the, uh, is this the old, is that the, the soccer field that was there, or is this, is this a different, is, is it the other side?
Just north of the, uh, Mobile Home Park on the east side.
Okay. Okay. And then there's, there's really not a, a, much of a drainage issue with, with this one, or is?
No, but they will have to do a small detention pond because the site is basically pervious right now, and it's almost gonna be a hundred percent impervious.
Okay. Okay. And y'all have already had your DRC meeting and?
Correct. They're aware of it. We've approved the plans, and they're anxious to get started on construction, which is dealing with some last-minute items.
Sure. All right. And, and once again, to reiterate what Mr. Gro, council member Gro had said, we welcome you here and hope that we can, you know, be good partners in the future.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak rega, uh, regarding this agenda item? Again, it's agenda item number seven. Okay, seeing none, I'll now close the public hearing at eight twenty, and we are in line for a motion. Council member Gro.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve, uh, plat Papa dash zero one three dash one seven. First reading?
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval. As, as second, council member, uh, Trump.
I'm second.
Thank you, sir. A motion for approval in a second. If you would, please, uh, signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, council, and welcome to Holtham City. Moving right along, the agenda item number eight, final plat being P dash oh one two dash one six. Again, Ms. Bachelor.
Evening again. This is phase one of High Point Edition. Uh, we're here to conduct a public hearing and consider action on the application of Goodwin and Marshall on behalf of Abreeze, uh, Three Limited for approval of a, a water course maintenance agreement, facilities agreement, and final plat creating High Point Edition Phase One from a portion of block three and four of Fossil Ridge subdivision, and a portion of lot one R, block four, of lots one R and two R, block four of Fossil Ridge Edition, located in the PD Plan Development for SF two, single-family residence uses, containing approximately thirty-seven point nine five seven acres of land, locally known as forty-eight oh five Northeast Loop Eight twenty, and unaddressed property. The applicant proposes to create two hundred and twenty-five residential lots and ten open space lots in accordance with ordinance number oh, twenty fourteen double oh six fourteen, the Fossil Lake Plan Development, which was approved by city council at the final reading on May twelfth, twenty fourteen. A planned amenity center in all open space areas will be maintained by the Homeowners Association. On November fourteenth, twenty seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of P zero one two sixteen by a vote of three zero. Staff also recommends the approval of the Water Course Maintenance Agreement and Facilities Agreement. P and Z staff report was, with attachments was included in your packet, and if you'll check the screen up here. This is the area for phase one. These are the new homes for the area, as well as, as this area here. The applicant is, uh, in attendance, if you have any questions, myself or them. And, um, we will have a special meeting next Tuesday with P and Z for phase two of the project, and that will be before council on Monday, December the eleventh.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions from the council for, uh, Ms. Bachelor or Dr. Trump?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, almost thirty-eight acre here. How many units is it, approximately?
Of the residences?
Yeah.
Total two hundred and twenty-five. I believe this phase is a hundred and eight, a hundred and eight.
And, uh, most of them single-story or two-story?
It'll be mixed. Uh, according to the PD, it's like seventy-five of certain square footage, seventy-five of another square footage. It's all detailed in the plan development.
And that would be a lot, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Trump. Uh, council member Fowler?
This may be for the applicant. The, uh, is the, the potential, uh, two-phasing of it or dual-phasing, is it, will they go ahead and, are they gonna do infrastructure? Will it require infrastructure throughout, and then the, the surface?
All of the infrastructure has to be done for both phases prior to the model homes being, um, commenced.
That's so, so it's gonna require all the, all this infrastructure to be put in?
Yes, including the retaining walls.
Okay. And so is i, if, you know, is there a reason they're, they're plating it or, or doing it in two phases, or is it just 'cause of the volume of lots?
That would be a question for the applicant. I know the preliminary plat was one single plat.
Okay. Is the applicant available?
He is.
Do you wanna wait till a public hearing or?
Oh, it's fine. Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Are there, before we go to public hearing, are there any questions or comments from the council for, uh, Ms. Bachelor? Seeing none, okay. I will now open the public hearing at eight twenty-five for anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding this agenda item. Uh, the applicant here is here. He can come up and address your questions, councilman Fowler. If you would, sir, just please state your name.
My name is Stephen Barnes. I represent the master developer and the owner of the property, Abres Three Limited. Mayor and council, thank y'all very much for being here tonight, for supporting the city, and giving your personal time to help the public good. Um, Ben, uh, Lukey is, represents Hanover Property Company, who is, uh, the developer and has the expertise in overseeing the construction of these lots, and and Ryan Spears has been with Goodwin and Marshall and has done a great job of delivering our plans and working with Greg and Rex and Will and their staff to get that done. Uh, Trey, your question specifically, we started out looking at just using one home builder who preferred to do a two-phase development over like a, a three, maybe four-year timeframe. And we started the initial plans with that concept of just building a hundred and eight lots and then coming back with, I guess it'd be a hundred and seventeen or something in the second phase. And then, and Ben and his company came in with the idea of, let's do two home builders at one time, build the whole thing at one time with fossil ridge circle extension. And so we had a larger total project, and the unit costs were more beneficial. It became a more efficient process. And obviously better for the city and better for the market to bring the whole development at one time.
So you're actually, so you'll bring all your lots on the, on, they'll call, come online together then, is what you're, what you're doing, even though you're calling it two phases?
Well, again, uh, so we had the first phase plans practically done before we decided to go to the two-home builder concept.
Okay.
So we decided to finish that with Greg and your staff, just because we'd gone so far in that process. And, uh, so, so our goal is to build the whole thing out at one time and, uh, and start both home builders at one time. And the marketing programs and the synergy of all that going really is the concept.
On your economies of scale, like you said.
Yes, sir. Economies of scale, that's a good, right.
As, as far as, are you at liberty to divulge the home builders that'll be in that?
I think we're finalized with our contracts.
Yeah, the, the home builders will be Cabinian Homes and David Weekly Homes.
Okay. It's okay, however, David Weekly.
Splitting the lots equally, as equally as two hundred and twenty-five can be, but yes.
Sure. One of them's gonna get the bad lot, I think. The small oddball lot.
The good lot, the best lot, the best lot.
Yes, sir. Okay. And y'all, uh, we were able to, to get, you know, our staff was able to get y'all with the FEMA, so all that's taking care of your climbers, your lomers, and when do y'all anticipate dirt moving?
Uh, we anticipate starting dirt in, uh, by mid-December. And the construction time will be around thirteen to fourteen months, depending on weather. Um, and that's when the lots will be completed and accepted by the city.
So you're about a thirteen to fourteen month development, and then, and then you'll start your models at that point?
The models may start just a little bit earlier than that, but yes, uh, that's when the, the, all the public improvements that we put in would be inspected and accepted by the city, and then residents can move in at that time.
Okay.
But the models will start just a little bit before that, probably.
Okay. And you said, I know y'all talked about it, what was the projected build-out on it? What's their takedown, or, you know, what do y'all anticipate complete build-out on it?
Well, the, and the builders' contracts take down the two hundred and twenty-five lots close to, um, around, over, a little over twenty-four months. Um, and then obviously, when they take that last turn, depends on velocity, how quick they build them. But I would say the entire project's probably gonna be, um, built out and for delivery, twenty-four to thirty-six months after that.
Okay.
'Cause typically in today's market for a builder, um, you wanna keep about a twenty-four month supply of vacant developed lots on the ground. Uh, and so twenty-four month supply, it, it equates to somewhere around thirty-six, maybe a little bit longer than that, just depending on the velocity.
Okay. And, and a little bit off the subject, but the weekly project in Ver, in Veridian, do, do you deal with them on that?
No, that's a different, that's Johnson Development.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Sure, thank y'all for y'all's interest in our community also.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, councilmember Fowler. Are there any other questions, uh, from the council for the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your interest in our community. Are there any other questions, uh, or comments from the, uh, anybody in the audience wishing to speak regarding this agenda item? Again, this is agenda item number eight. Okay, seeing none, and I'll close the public hearing at eight twenty-eight. And council, we are now in line for a motion. Councilmember Fowler, your light's still on. Did you have a question or a comment or make a motion?
I can make a motion if we need to, Mr. Mayor. Uh, move for the approval of final plat, uh, P's dash zero one two dash one six, the High Point Edition Phase One, uh, on the first, this is first reading, isn't it? Yes.
You're just, strike.
Or, sorry. Final plat.
Okay. Thank you, sir, uh, let's see here, Councilmember Grow.
That's for a second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, we have a motion for approval in a second, if you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous, this has been a long time coming, we're certainly excited, uh, this day is here, thank you. So if you're looking at your agenda, our agenda item number nine, uh, let's see, Ms. Bachelor.
Um, yes, this was, uh, presented to P and Z on November the fourteenth for a rezone of twenty-nine oh eight, twenty-eight oh eight, and twenty-nine twenty-four Carson by Michael Hayward. Uh, it was denied at, by P and Z, and I have gotten a withdrawal from the applicant to not pursue it. I was able to furnish him with a zoning letter that appeased his banking, and he has a six-month window if there was some catastrophic event where he could rebuild, so he's satisfied with that.
Okay, thank, uh, Mr. Olson, do we need to take any action on this because it has been withdrawn by the applicant?
Yeah, I wasn't familiar with what was going on there. I think it would be appropriate for the council to acknowledge the withdrawal.
Okay, so we need an actual motion for that to acknowledge the, okay, withdrawal by the applicant? Okay, uh, council? We do need a formal action to acknowledge the withdrawal by the applicant. Does it need to be stated specifically, or is it just?
I think that would be sufficient just to, to the move to acknowledge that the case has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Okay, and if you would, this is going to have to be a hand vote, so, uh, Councilmember, uh, let's see, Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move that on ordinance number zero two ze- zero dash two zero one seven dash zero two eight dash one five, that, uh, the acceptance of a withdrawal by the applicant would be, uh, recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you, sir, uh, Councilmember Grow.
That's for a second.
Okay, and again, this is a hand vote, so well, I'm not voting, so.
Unanimous.
Okay. Thank, thank you, council. Uh, motion passes unanimous to accept the withdrawal by the applicant. Uh, moving right along to the Visitors and Citizens Forum. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak during this time? Okay, seeing none, uh, we have no resignation of board members, uh, any appointments or reappointments?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I do have a resignation.
Oh, you, oh, you did, okay. Uh, you, yes, ma'am, I didn't see it.
Okay, this is from Lynn Thompson, I'm going to read her, read it. Um, at this time, and, uh, based on city charter, I'm required to resign my position on the Fire Services Board. Let it be known that it has been an awesome opportunity to work and serve with citizens and staff of Holtham City. Respectfully submitted, Lynn Thompson.
Thank you, uh, council, if you would, please ratify the resignation of Councilmember Thompson.
By hand or by?
We, we, yeah, that was just on that one item. Okay. She's, that's her own, she's the one who resigned.
You can go ahead and stay.
I did.
Okay, so votes six to, accept, okay, thank you, council. Are there any appointments or reappointments? Uh, Councilmember Fowler.
Well, I, I don't know of, um, my member on the Fire Services Board, um, Mr. Streeter, I believe, has moved. And so I would ask for, uh, to be ratified, for his vacancy to be ratified. Uh, and then I'll have to find someone that can serve in that capacity, but I'd, I'd just like to s- um, had the great opportunity, Mr. Streeter served on that board for years and years and years, and um, has been a, a, you know, he lost his wife and has since moved from the city, but has been a, uh, you know, not only a a great citizen, but a warrior for our fire department for many, many years, and I just want to, you know, remind everybody what all he did for our community.
Yes, sir, yes, he has.
We have, Trey, do we have a recognition reservation?
No, sir.
That's what he's asking me to do now. Okay, if we would, please acknowledge the resignation of Mr. Harland Streeter from the Fire Services Board. Okay, it's unanimous, thank you.
And I would like to ask, if we could, ask, uh, Mr. Camacho to prepare something for Mr. Streeter for his many years of service.
Okay, okay, I may, uh, in the form of, I may bring a pardon, have y'all sign.
That may be a letter from the mayor.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll put something together for him. Proclamation or something for him.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to, um, make the nomination for the Beautification Board.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Mr. Bob Presley, who has served previously on the board.
Okay.
And I have spoken with him, and he is, uh, very interested in coming back on the board.
Okay, uh, you have anyone else for any of the other boards, is that your only one?
That's the only one for right now, thank you.
Mr. Bob Presley for the Beautification Board, if you would please, council, ratify your votes. Unanimous, fantastic. Uh, Councilmember, uh, None, did you have a appointment or reappointment? Okay.
Yes, Mayor, I do, I have, um, three reappointments.
Okay.
Okay, for the Parks Board, I'd like to reappoint, um, Cherry Crum.
Okay.
We do this one at a time or all together?
Have it all together.
Okay. P and Z, um, Steve Bowman, and ZBA, Joseph Springfield.
Okay, everybody have those? Okay, if you would, please ratify your votes. Bob? Motion passes unanimous, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Fowler, did you have a, I seen your light was on just a moment now. Does anybody else have any? I have one, uh, this is for the, uh, just a moment here, if you would please, for the Housing Authority, uh, Ann Wilson. Her application is on file for the, uh, Housing Authority. If you would, please ratify with your votes. And Ms. Thompson? Okay, motion passes unanimous, and I too will be looking for a, uh, an appointment for our Beautification Board, I hope to have someone at the next, the next council meeting. Uh, we do not have an executive session, and everyone here, we have a full council, so there's no attendance requirements, with that being said, we'll adjourn at eight thirty-five.